We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Did that so well.
It sounds so much better when we're all in unison in the same room. The Town of Burlington will be holding the June 17th meeting of the Planning Board as a hybrid meeting due to the expiration of the state of emergency that was issued due to the COVID-19 virus on March 12th, 2020. Please note that the option for participation via WebEx is being provided as a courtesy to the public, and the meeting will not be suspended or terminated if technological problems interrupt the virtual broadcast unless otherwise required by law. For those who are seeking to participate remotely, there are a variety of ways to do that. We use a Cisco WebEx platform. You can go to townofberlincoln.webs.com. The meeting number is 173-692-6890. The meeting password is 1645. You can join by phone at 617-315-0704. The meeting is being broadcast on BCAT, Facebook Live, and the BCAT Facebook page. You will make comments during the hearing, during the time for public comments. Questions could be asked via WebEx, WebEx Chat function, Facebook Live, or by calling the Planning Office at 781-270-1645, and by email at planning@berlincoln.org. All persons wishing to ask a question or make a comment should identify themselves beforehand. Great, thank you. We have a few items being continued off this week's agenda. They have a motion, please.
Madam Chair, make a motion to take item 7B and 7I together and out of order for discussion purposes.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Continued, item B is a continued public hearing. Application for approval of a special permit pursuant to 4.2.6.9. Fast order food establishments of the zoning bylaw provisions, 75 Middlesex Turnpike at the Burlington Mall. Bennett Store Burlington, Mass. LLC is the applicant. Item C is a continued public hearing. Application for approval of a special permit pursuant to 12.1.5. PD special permit of the zoning bylaw provisions, 25 Network Drive. The Norvillum Company is the applicant. Item D is a continued public hearing. Application for approval of a special permit pursuant to 1.5.1. Light manufacturing or processing plants of the Northwest Park PDD bylaw provisions, 25 Network Drive. The Norvillum Company is the applicant. Item E is a continued public hearing. Application for approval of a special permit pursuant to 1.5.2. Laboratories engaged in research, experimental, and testing activities, including but not limited to the fields of biology, chemistry, electronics, engineering, geology, medicine, and physics, subject to the Planning Board making the findings that forth in Section 8.3.7.4 of the zoning bylaws and subject to the applicable rules and regulations of the Board of Health of the Northwest Park PDD bylaw provisions, 25 Network Drive. The Norvillum Company is the applicant. Item F is an application for approval of a special permit pursuant to 1.5.3. Wholesale trade and warehousing of the Northwest Park PDD bylaw provisions, 25 Network Drive. The Norvillum Company is the applicant. Item G is a continued public hearing. Application for approval of special permit pursuant to 1.6.7. Discharges manmade structures into the wetlands of the Northwest Park PDD bylaw provisions, 25 Network Drive. The Norvillum Company is the applicant. Item H is a continued public hearing. Application for approval of a special permit pursuant to 1.7.5. Accessory health club located entirely within a commercial residential facility of the Northwest Park PDD bylaw provisions, 25 Network Drive. The Norvillum Company is the applicant. Item I is a continued public hearing. Application for approval of a special permit pursuant to 1.7.19. Storage of oils, fuels, petroleum products, including storage for onsite heating purposes and landscape maintenance equipment in excess of 50 gallons of the Northwest Park PDD bylaw provisions, 25 Network Drive. The Norvillum Company is the applicant. Item J is a continued discussion. Application for approval of a minor engineering change, 15, 35, 45, 95, and 25 Network Drive. The Norvillum Company is the applicant. I just want to go back to item B. I don't know that that actually should be there.
Should not be there.
All right.
Right.
Spike item B.
Spike item B from the record.
For Bennett is a little confused on that.
I know.
May I?
Madam Chair, make a motion to continue this matter's Planning Board meeting of July 15th, 2021, as requested by an email by the applicant's attorney dated June 16th, 2021.
All those in favor?
Second.
Oh, I'm sorry. Any second.
Favor.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Same.
Make a motion to take item 7O out of order for discussion purposes.
Second. Item O is a continued public hearing. Application for approval and amendment for definitive subdivision plan for Redmond Street. Mari Hills Incorporated, Incorporated is the applicant. Madam Chair, make a motion to continue this matter to the Planning Board meeting of July 15th, 2021, as requested by the applicant in an email dated June 15th, 2021.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Same? Opposed? Moving forward. Next is citizens' time. If any audience member in the hearing room wishes to speak, please come up to the table and identify yourself. For those participating remotely, please raise your hand and/or identify themselves. Thank you.
I'm seeing nobody.
Thank you. And announcements, please.
Yes, so announcements. So tomorrow, June 18th, all town offices will be closed. Juneteenth does, of course, fall on June 19th. It's on a Saturday, however, we'll be observing it tomorrow. So we, the town offices will be closed. ZVRC Sign Subcommittee, June 21st at 5:30 via Zoom. Housing Partnership Committee, June 24th at 6 o'clock via Cisco WebEx. July 4th will be observed on July 5th. That is a Monday. All town offices will be closed. And the Board of Appeals will be on July 6th at 7:30. Location is to be determined whether they will hold it in the main hearing room or on WebEx, as Governor Baker did just sign an extension through April 1st of 2022 to hold remote public meetings. So that's to be determined.
Thank you, Brady. Do any members have any additional announcements?
I don't have an announcement. I just have a comment. It's nice to see everyone be back here at the Town Hall. And I want to extend my thanks to all the town departments who helped keep us running through the last 15 months. BCAT and the tech folks, Tom Clerk, kept the elections running. It's really, the Board of Health did a great job here in town keeping the town running. It's really a credit to our great town that we were able to just continue without a beat and keep moving on, just to have you in better times moving forward.
Great, thank you, Mike.
I also had something, if I could, Madam Chair. Just like, like to extend my condolences, and I'm sure the board's condolences, on the passing of our Planning Director, Christine Castner's mother this past weekend. And I'm, I believe there was an obituary posted today, if people are correct.
Yeah, if people are interested, email planning@berlincoln.org, and we can send out the information to all those that are interested. Thank you. Legal notices, we do not have any. We have no approvals, and just no, nor any administrative matters. Matters of treatment. We have a public hearing. Application for approval of a special permit pursuant to 4.2.6.9. Fast order food establishments of the zoning bylaw, 75 Middlesex Turnpike, Burlington Mall, Bennett Store, Bennett Store Burlington, Mass. LLC is the applicant. Does the Plin, does the Plin staff any comments regarding this item?
We do not. It's a fairly straightforward application. We heard it last week. This is our second hearing. And so I think that should be pretty straightforward hearing.
Madam Chair, I'm going to recuse myself if I didn't watch the tape.
Great, thank you. Do we have any new department comments?
We do not at this time, Madam Chair.
Great.
Hi. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. For the record, Christine Hong from Rehm &amp; Bronstein, Attorney for the applicant Bennett Sandwich Shops. First, I just want to say it's really nice to be back in person to see all the faces like old times, and strangely new, too. With me tonight, I have Bradley Harder, who is a principal at Bennett. He is joining us via WebEx. He's up in Maine right now. He's busy opening up his newest location in Penny Bunkport. When we opened up at the last hearing, we gave a detailed presentation regarding what Bennett is. They are moving into a portion of the Burlington Mall in the former Sears location, facing the Burlington Mall roadside. We had someone walk the board through the floor plan, and we answered questions that the board had. And I know that because it was a Zoom meeting, the policy is to hold, you know, two hearings for, for comments. And so we're back here today, hoping that we will receive a favorable recommendation vote, and we'll also, we're also able to answer any questions that you may have.
Great, thank you. Anyone on the board have questions or comments they'd like to make at this time?
I don't know. I just had a question. Dan, this is a subsequent location, locations.
Yep, so they have a location in the, in Portsmouth, New Hampshire. They're opening one up currently in Penny Bunkport, and then this will be their fourth location. It's not a franchise. It's just, you know, family-owned, and, you know, featuring higher-end sandwiches and salads.
Madam Chair? Yes, of course. The only question I have is, I'm wondering when you expect to open, because the mall has, that whole section of the mall has been shut down for some time, and we're really anxious to see it come back to life. So if you had a target opening date, I'd love to know what it is.
I don't know. Brendan, are you on? Do you, can you answer that question? I think you might be on mute.
Hi, everybody. It's an honor to be here. Thank you for having me. Can you hear me?
Hello.
Hi, everyone. Sorry about that. So we're aiming for a between 10, October 1st and November 1st opening.
Great, thank you.
My pleasure. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that has any questions or comments? Is there anyone in the audience? This is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience or on the WebEx that would like to make a comment or ask a question?
I'm seeing nobody.
I have a motion, please.
Madam Chair, make a motion to close the public hearing on this matter.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to request the Bennett Store LLC a special permit pursuant to Section 4.2.6.9. Fast order food establishments of zoning bylaw, Burlington zoning bylaw, located at 75 Middlesex Turnpike, Burlington Mall, subject to the terms and conditions contained and included any attached.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Welcome.
Welcome to Burlington.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, guys. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to take item 7J together for discussion purposes.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Item J is a public hearing. Application for approval of a special permit pursuant to 4.2.6.9. Fast order food establishments of the zoning bylaw provisions, 59, 63, Middlesex Turnpike, North. Applicant. Item K is a public hearing. Application for approval of a special permit pursuant to 4.4.1.11. Discharges from manmade structures into the wetlands of the zoning bylaw provisions, 59, 63, Middlesex Turnpike, Noria Energy is the applicant. Item L is a application for approval of a special permit pursuant to 6.1.1. Nonconforming uses of the zoning bylaw provisions, 59 through 63, Middlesex Turnpike, Noria Energy is the applicant. Item M is a public hearing. Application for approval of a special permit pursuant to 6.1.2. Nonconforming structures and premises of the zoning bylaw provisions, 59 through 63, Middlesex. Noria Energy is the applicant. Item N is a public hearing. Application for approval of a site plan, 59 through 63, Middlesex Turnpike, Noria Energy is the applicant. Does the staff have any comments regarding this item?
So at our last public hearing, we had a few kind of items that the board had kind of outlined that they were looking to kind of resolve with this plan. There was questions about the bollards and the curbless, the curbless sidewalk going into the plant store, and the number of pumps, and the, the amount of vegetation and landscaping that they were looking to do on the site. At this point, I think that, you know, we're looking to have, figure out, you know, what you guys are willing to, are looking to see, and, you know, kind of where we can meet in the middle somewhere. So with that, I think, I think I'm all set.
Do we have any new departmental comments since our last hearing?
Not at this time, Madam Chair.
We are waiting on the Conservation Commission. They are not going to give their, issue their permit until our site plan is all set, because if they have to, if we amend anything, then they have to back again. So we're, we're before them this time.
And nothing from the Police Department. Here, Representative, applicant?
Madam Chair, members of the board, for the record, my name is Bill Troyer, Rehm &amp; Bronstein for Noria Energy this evening, and have a whole team here. So we'll let them introduce themselves when they come up, if that's okay. So I echo all the sentiments expressed earlier. It's good to see you all, all healthy and happy, so glad to be here for one. And I wanted to thank the board for the last two public hearing comments and directions and, you know, suggestions. We've tried to implement as many as we can, describe those tonight and show. For some of those changes. And I wanted to thank Liz and Brady as well. They met with us this week to give us a little more help and direction and guidance. So with all that, what we're hoping to do is, again, go through quickly some of those outstanding issues, try to give you our thinking about them, and maybe at some point, once the plan is completely explained by the team, just to get a sense of the board, if they can support the plan we're going to show tonight, or if not. So we don't have to take up more time than is necessary. So just quickly, I wanted to, if I could, take the opportunity to maybe explain some things that I take the blame for not explaining or being clear at the last two public hearings. And related to the number of dispensers being proposed and the raised sidewalk issue, I know there was a lot of comment about that and suggest, wanted to just talk about those kind of quickly at the beginning, and then hand it off for the plan explanation by the team. So one of the things I maybe didn't make clear is, and Kirsten Braun, the traffic engineer, can explain a little bit more nuance than I can, is that the number of fuel dispensers in a site like this doesn't typically drive the customer count. In other words, it's not a change in the degree of the use. So, you know, people passing by are going to use this site, whether there are four, five, six, seven pumps. So I don't think I was really clear about that last time. So from my point of view, and sort of the bylaw analysis, is that, again, it doesn't, the number of the dispensers, to me, doesn't seem like it fits into that category of increasing the degree of the nonconforming use. It almost, to me, looks like when I look at the bylaw, maybe an alteration or an expansion of the structures, which has a little different standard, or some of the criteria that we look at for that is a little bit different. But the general standard, I think, you know, you've seen many, many of these, I won't belabor it is. Alteration or expansion cannot be substantially more detrimental. We think we need that and more. We think, for all the reasons we have talked about before, including the number of dispensers, is it, it actually improved the site. So our goal here was to propose things that improve the site. Circulation, the environmental condition of the site, the offerings at the store, reviving the little restaurant use on site. So from a traffic point of view, and onsite and offsite point of view, we think that the proposal is a general improvement to what's there now, not a detriment at all. So I just wanted to try to clarify that a little bit if I could, and answer some questions about it if I can going forward. The other piece of it that got a lot of, I got a lot of attention was the raised sidewalk. And I know, I think, to a person, the members really thought that that was an important thing to have on the site. So I'm going to have Tom talk about it a little bit more, and I don't know if the risk management manager is on or not, but we can talk about those things that have happened over the last couple of months at the, at other sites with the raised sidewalks. But so the idea was, again, it was a safety issue for customers and employees, and we really liked the design. We thought it looked nice as well. I know there was some disagreement on that, so we'll get into that in more detail. But I would like to point out that I have worked on or seen a couple of other sites in town that have similar design. So for example, the main drive aisle at Wegmans is, so it's an active driveway, and when customers are walking from the Wegmans garage over to the main entrance, there's no raised sidewalk at that point. It's separated, the roadway is separated from the sidewalk, the walkway by bollards as well. And I think it works pretty well. It looks pretty nice. It seems very safe. So I would say that might be a good example for here. The two main mall entrances have the same design. EDVs has a similar active roadway with a sidewalk at similar grade. So it's not that unconventional. I know that those sites don't have head and parking, so I know that is a distinction, and we're aware of that. I would just say to that point that an active roadway seems to me fairly risky as well. And when someone is heading into a parking space, I think their mindset is slow down, stop. So I think, you know, the active roadway with the at-grade sidewalk is, anyway, just a good comparison, and it does exist in town to a certain extent, that this isn't that unusual. So I wanted to make those two points. So I think I'll hand it off to Luke at this point, and talk about the changes we're able to make, the increased landscaping at a couple of spots on the site. Just sort of summarize that landscape change.
Sure. Good evening, for the record, Luke Di Stefano with Bowler Engineering.
We actually need to, for the WebEx, if you could please come there, if Troyer is, so that the folks at home can see you.
Well, again, good evening, for the record, Luke Di Stefano with Bowler Engineering. As noted, what I'd like to do is quickly walk through the deviations between this plan and the last one that you saw at the last meeting. And they're relatively minor, but we feel they've taken into account the comments that we heard at the last meeting, as it related primarily to some additional green space or landscape properties, specifically along property boundary, or the boundary between our site and the Dunkin' Donuts. And as we had previously mentioned, we don't have a lot of wiggle room over there, because given the narrowness of the site, we needed that space to be able to get our fuel delivery vehicle into and around the property. But what we did, and hopefully you could see it on the screen or on the plans in front of you, we had added a small, what I'll call, almost like a bow out of the north side of the property. We created a little bit of a half circle of additional landscape. Again, what we did is we allowed enough room for the truck to continue to make the turn from the fuel, fuel tanks out of the property onto the right of Weg. And then in addition to that, in the northwest corner of the building, where the building its corner is, we added another small landscape island to differentiate the parking, but also to provide a little more landscaping. And it may not seem like much, but we were able to create an additional, just about 250 square feet of green space on the property. It's really the most of what we could do, given some of the constraints of the site, and as I mentioned, the need to get the fuel delivery vehicle around the property. One other change from the plan that you saw last time is that Noria has agreed to dye the parking spaces of the concrete in front black to match the asphalt, so that we understand there was some concern about the differentiation in color. So that's been shown on the plan, and that really is just the parking spots on the west side of the building or the front side of the building, as well as the north side of the building or left side of the building. So that, those are generally the major changes between the last plan and this plan this evening. And with that, I'm certainly happy to answer any questions the board may have.
Any questions?
I just wanted to ask if we could maybe have Kirsten just discuss the traffic generation and where the little additional expenses are coming from. Just a question for us, what I was trying to, point I was trying to make at the beginning about the, the number of dispensers not really driving the customer.
Thank you. Kirsten Braun, Traffic Engineer with Ron Mueller Associates. So one of the things I wanted to highlight was that realistically, this is an expansion of an existing gas station. We don't expect a large increase in traffic from this redevelopment. Any increases in traffic are expected to be a combination of pump traffic and convenience store traffic. Increases are not solely associated with the increase in fuel islands. Most of the traffic utilizing the site will also be passed by traffic, meaning that they'll swing into the gas station on their way to a primary destination. So essentially, that traffic already exists on Middlesex Turnpike today. It wouldn't be new to the site. Any new trips we do expect would probably be from 95. So the, the increase in traffic would really just exist between 95 and a site on Middlesex Turnpike. We did perform traffic analyses that showed that this site redevelopment will have little to no impact on Middlesex Turnpike. All intersections are expected to operate comparable to how they're operating today. And just to give a little bit of reference, traffic increases on Middlesex Turnpike are expected in the range of 0.2% to 3% over what's already traveling on the roadway during peak hours. These increases are minimal and likely won't be noticed on Middlesex Turnpike. And furthermore, traffic increases during all other hours of the day will be much less. So ultimately, the expanded gas station will help process customers more efficiently. And the three driveways that are being provided will also help alleviate some of the delays and queues that might be felt on site if we had fewer driveways. I hope that's a quick summary of, you know, the traffic findings, and I'm open to any questions the board may have.
Great, thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to present for the applicant?
Thank you. Can I just ask you a question for clarification?
Sure.
Kristen, clarification purposes.
Yes.
You said traffic will increase from 0.2%?
So that's compared to what's already traveling on Middlesex?
But the second figure was 3% or 3%?
3% during the AM peak hour.
0.2 to 3%. Not 0.2. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
More questions in relation to that comment?
Of course.
But so, so like, so what's the reason for the increase if it doesn't? If what you're saying is it doesn't, I guess it doesn't create more traffic, you're saying doesn't create users to have additional pumps?
It would create more traffic. That's mostly because we're changing the land use from just a general gas station to sort of a super gas station slash convenience store. And basically, that is applied to any development where the convenience store is over 3,000 square feet. I think today it's about 2,000 square feet, so that's why it just falls under the regular gas station. But it's not necessarily a product of the two additional fuel islands.
So that, so I guess that's what I'm saying. So the island's not going to create any more pump traffic, is what you're saying?
Well, it's, it's a combination of both the uses. So it's pumps and the convenience store, but the change in use has become a super gas station convenience store because of the convenience store size.
Right. So typically, when they're at a pump, they, they finish pumping the gas and they head out, right? So you've got four, when you have four pumps, you have four people potentially finishing pumps, if, if all of them being used, if they're being used the way you anticipate them being used. And normally, you would have four cars vying for position to get out that exit. And now you're going to have at least six cars vying for position to exit, right?
I think the intent, and Tom can speak a little bit more, is, is the hope is, and this is why it's called a super gas station convenience store, is that somebody's going to stop to get gas and also go into the convenience store, whereas some people are just going to get gas, as you say, and then leave. So it's going to be, more people are going to be driven to using the convenience store, and maybe Tom has more input on that, but.
Sure, if I could. So I'm Tom Healy with Noria Energy, for the record. And not to sound like a broken record, but it, I've never been so excited to be to a Planning Board meeting. Face to face after a couple of remote meetings, and, you know, kudos to, to your town and several others that we've dealt with that, that have done a great job with the technology and been able to carry on business on almost a regular basis. So thank you for that. So thank you for that. So yes, I would like to take an opportunity to address a couple of the sticking points that the board had from the prior meeting. First of all, I'll speak to the number of the fuel islands. It is best practice today, when you're, when you're building a gas station, to not go less than six. We would not build a gas station with less than six fuel islands. And I want to get into that and explain that to you a little bit more.
Could you use a microphone?
Yeah. Well, I'm sorry, I thought this one was working. Okay. Okay. Thank you. I'll speak up.
Thank you.
So having six fuel islands, when we're investing this much money in this facility and we're combining the restaurant use and the convenience store use, what we're hoping to do is with the existing customers coming in, that we get that customer to spend more money at the store. Rather than just come in and fuel up and leave, we anticipate that we're going to get that larger market basket purchased from the customer because they'll go into the store, they might grab a sandwich, they might grab some convenience products. And with that, what typically is going to happen is, in reality of running a gas station, folks that, customers that fuel up and then plan to go into the store, most of them are going to park their vehicle at the fuel island, going to get their fuel, and they're going to leave their vehicle there. And they're going to go.
And they're what?
They're going to leave their vehicle at the fueling station, at that fueling position, and have that position tied up so that another customer can't come in. And they're going to go into the store, and they're going to buy their coffee, they're going to buy their sandwich, they may be purchasing. So that's one of the primary reasons that we do not want to go less than six fueling islands, because we will have islands tied up with dormant cars, cars that aren't fueling, they basically are using it as a parking space. The second, the second reason for the six fueling islands is it just allows us to handle traffic at peak times much better. Rather than having queuing and cars coming in and trying to view where the open space is and trying to align to make sure they've got their gas, their gas tank on the right side of the car, it gives them more options to pull in and immediately find an open fueling space, open fueling position. And one other reason, and this is important to kind of future-proof this, this location, we don't know what is going to be happening in the future with EV charging stations. Currently, we're really struggling with this, right? We want, we're putting them in at our new locations. We're not sure that we're putting them in the right place. We don't know what the market's going to look like in 10 years. We don't know if electric codes are going to change, would allow you to put an EV charging station close to a fuel dispenser. And we may need to have both options at these islands going forward. 10 years from now, who knows? But right now, we don't have a good handle on that. So that, that's one of the biggest challenges right now in the gas, gas station and convenience retailing is future-proofing for what the vehicle of the future is going to be, whether it's EV or other alternate fuels. So we really need the six islands, and that's something that's really is important to us. We do not build gas stations with fewer than that number of islands these days. To address the issue on the, on the raised sidewalk, there is absolutely no hidden agenda here. We, we have spent a lot of time with our insurance agent over the past 12 months, quarterly meetings, reviewing all the incident reports that we have at our locations. And I can show you data, over the last three years, we've had 33 recorded incidents of trips and falls relative to our building sidewalks. Ironically, the day after we had the last hearing here with your folks, hopefully anyway, I had an incident report come across my computer. It was, it was a young lady was walking into one of our stores. She had flip-flop sandals on, caught her flip-flop on the building sidewalk and went down face-first and cut her face open. Several instances like that with, you know, sprains, broken bones, and it's purely, purely a safety issue for us. And that's why we're trying to come up with a design that does not have that vertical transition. And it's, it's, if I had my safety director, we even hired our safety director over the past six months, he's on vacation today, but he was fully supportive of us doing this. I actually fought it for a while with, internally with my company, like not doing all the bollards. But the data doesn't lie, the safety data doesn't lie. We've had a lot of incidents, so we would like to eliminate those. And the last reason for the, for the bollards across the storefront, in addition to customer trips and falls, we've had fewer incidents, but they can be more serious incidents where we've had vehicles pull up to our buildings and jump the curb and go through the storefront of the building. And we just had this happen, it was two months ago, we have a site in Compton, Rhode Island that happened, unfortunately, nobody was seriously injured, but the person hit the, hit the gas when they thought they were hitting the brake and they went right, right through the front of the building. Thank goodness it was a late time of the evening, so we didn't really have many customers in the store. So that's, that's really another reason that, that we have come up with this bollard design. And again, there's, there's no hidden agenda to it. It's, it's a pure safety issue driven by insurance data that we have and the number of claims that we have placed against us. So I would gladly take any questions from the board on those two matters. And then I would just like to follow up with a couple other comments about, about the plan and what we're trying to do with this new facility.
Toby, that's a good question.
Sure.
Just for clarification, there is, you see on the plan, there's six pumping stations. Am I correct in understanding that there can be two cars at each of those?
Yes.
Okay, so it's, it's not six cars at once, it's up to twelve? Just, I wasn't sure.
Yeah, so currently, we could have, we could have eight vehicles fueling at a time. And with this new layout, we would, we could potentially have 12 vehicles fueling at a time. Although, as I brought up earlier, several of those vehicles will be using these parking spaces. That's, that's the reality of it.
I'm sorry to catch the last part of your.
I was just mentioning that, that the reality of it is that if all of those fueling positions are, have a vehicle at them, the likelihood is that two, three, four of those vehicles are in the, the customers in the store doing some shopping, and they're using them as parking spaces because they don't, they don't leave the fuel island and then drive 20, 30 feet to pull into another space in front of the store.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Quick question, I found something you said, just said very interesting. Are you finding that you have less incidents at the locations where they don't have the raised sidewalk? Are you saying you're finding that they're actually safer?
We only have constructed two of those, okay? We're going by, you know, some, some, just some, what's common in retail design now. If you see a lot, a lot of the chain retailers now, they're going with this design. I've noticed this to be more of an issue when there was a big focus put on, put on ADA regulations where we had to go back and retrofit a lot of older stations and put in, put in ramps for, for wheelchair access. And that was a challenge working with existing buildings. And that's where we've had a lot of trips and falls. We've done, you know, we've put up railings where we could to try to make those as a barrier. We've painted sidewalk curbs yellow, which isn't very attractive, but we've tried to do that as another, you know, a safety feature to, to make sure that people see the curves. But ultimately, we still have a lot, a lot of incidents.
I have a quick question on this. So you said 33 incidents in three years. How many gas stations does that encompass, or gas station C-stores?
I must correct myself, 34, because the one at the last meeting, I didn't count. But we operate about 140 service stations throughout New England.
Does everyone have any questions or comments?
Thank you, Madam Chair. One of the things that we talked about last time was landscaping in the front. Kind of thinking as we're all talking about the bollards versus the granite curving, is the way to kill two birds with one stone here is to put kind of planters, right? We've seen applicants come before us that put, you know, bollards in the planters, and then you've got the planters there to act as the bollards. So you don't have 20 bollards, whatever it is up front, you have a couple of planters that would be acting as bollards across the front and maybe one on the side. And then you can enhance that with planting, so now you get kind of, you buffer that stark area with the plants, and the plant itself can be attractive, you can make it, you know, wood planted, but inside would be the bollards, right? So you really, then you start to pick that in for being a very stark, you know, blank building. Then you increase the landscape there all around the building, and then you've got the, you could architecturally think about those planks, what they look like from the outside of the sign. And then I think it's a win-win on that one. Then just, you said there's going to be some extra landscaping on that little cookout that you did. Is there details on that of what that will be?
The type of landscaping?
Type of plant, yeah, I don't see any of that.
Yeah, there's some rhododendrons, dogwoods, junipers, basically. We're looking to keep the plantings about three feet in height or lower.
Is that anywhere documented on the landscaping plan you submitted then?
The landscape plan identifies the planting species, et cetera. Correct.
And just one thing in general, just from the other stores you have from downtown, you tend to, you wrap signs around the light posts. I'm trying to see where your light posts are. Maybe put that in the condition to prohibit kind of signage around light posts. Thank you. Did you have a question on the sign that's going to require a variance? What's that sign going to say? Yep. Okay, thank you. The variance, the sign's going to require variance, what's that going to say? It's down here at, you look to the, to the, to the right island, and there's a full sign, variance required. Why you need it. You have multiple signs, right, on the building and then probably on the awning.
It's in the bottom center.
Yeah.
Are you about the timeline sign in front, or the sign right directly in front adjacent to the right of Weg?
It looks like that, says variance required?
Yeah, I believe we had indicated variance would be required due to a setback.
Due to setback?
Correct.
Because the setback is going to be too close to the road?
That's our understanding, correct.
And you need, are you going to, is that sign for the food or is that sign for the switch to ash or what is it?
I believe at this point in time, you can correct me. We had put the sign on the plan to show a general location, and that the signage would be permitted separate, that we needed to show a general location for the sign. Ultimately, I think they're still working through that on their end. It's exactly what that sign would convey.
Do you know how high that sign would be? Anyway, I'm asking that is because you're telling me that we need the landscaping fairly low, and hopefully the sign you're talking about is going to be, or just from a view from a traffic standpoint, again, if folks don't live in the town, Middlesex Turnpike, when you talk about adding that 3%, it's, it's completely jammed up, right? It's very difficult, you know, when those cars are coming in and out, they were trying to jockey position to get the heck out of our end of Middlesex Turnpike. It's kind of like a bit of a racetrack, where they get the opportunity to get that open.
Madam Chair, I'd like to address some of, some of the questions and comments from Mr. Gaffney. So first of all, the easy one is the sign issue. We are not proposing a freestanding sign. So if there's, if that's, if that's a note on the plan, that, that is in error, we would be doing what we're, what we're doing similarly at the other gas stations. And at this one, we would have a price sign, but it would be attached to the, to the fuel column, so it could be viewed from the street, but it would not be a freestanding sign. So we would not be seeking a variance for that. And there will not be anything in that, in that front landscape area of the sort. To, to address the issue of proposing planters along the front of the building, we, we did discuss that, and for a couple of reasons, we, we would not like to proceed with that. First of all, the depth of the development here, we, we basically have, have, you know, the minimum dimensions we want to get to for the, for the driveway and the sidewalk and the building, and then to get, to get the landscape, to keep the green space in the back. So the bollards will only take up their, their six-inch bollards. So that's, that's really just six inches of additional depth that we're talking about. Planters, to do anything substantial with planters would require a much greater depth. And we just, we wouldn't be able to fit that without making further site modifications, downsizing the building, or, you know, doing something detrimental to the travel lanes. The, the second, the second reason we'd like to avoid that is when, when you put those types of planters out along the storefront and you have your customer entrances, they tend to be, become ashtrays and trash receptacles for customers coming in, and it's, it's hard to maintain any, any living plantings in. We don't, I think we've tried, the Shell Oil used to do those in the past, and some, they'd have some, some larger diameter, two-foot diameter, three-foot diameter planters that they would put around, and it just, they were just never able to maintain them well. So we would, we would rather not do that. It would, it would impact the overall site plan if we were to try to fit some type of planter in there. I, I know we did increase the landscaping as, as much as we could, and I challenged our design team to do that with the, with the existing structures that we're proposing. And we really tried to max that out. And I know that we're, you know, we're meeting all of the, the zoning dimensional requirements, and I know it's always great to exceed that. And we have, you know, exceeded the, the amount of previous area, landscaped area, and, but I, I just, without really having a negative impact on this, this site plan, I'm not sure where else we could go with the landscaping.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. I think we're, you're getting basically right to where I'm getting as well. Sounds like you're trying to overbuild the site to, to the detriment of kind of what we're supposed to be doing here, is trying to enhance the site. You know, with landscaping, you said you just can't do it because of the parking spaces and the drive aisles. If, if that, you know, you say if you can take that, now you've got a 4,800 square foot building, 5,000 square foot building, you can come in a bit, right? And then you're now, you're in a smaller building, which you don't want to do because you want to build a bathroom, you can, then you have that opportunity to put some even genuine landscaping there. But yeah, so then you don't do that, you're now, you're left with that, with the bollards, and there's nothing there to break that up, and it's very limited down at the front. And I think from a playing, member's standpoint, we do have the opportunity to comment and vote on the landscaping plan. I think that really, I think there's opportunity there, but you just don't want to do that because just where your constraints are on your proposal. You see, that's what I had from last meeting, was we've got to the chargers not to have any signage like we have over the movie theater and Wegmans, and then the gas pumps, you know, playing video. I think that's, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Of course. I have a couple of comments, but first I wanted to ask the question, because we own the two other stations in town, one by our common and one in what we call the downtown area, both of those sites, we have had issues with temporary signage that doesn't belong there. So this, you know, we, we talked about that, that you're not going to have this, those things at this site, but we don't want them at those two sites either. So I'd like to ask you to commit now that you will make sure that that doesn't continue at the two other sites that you own in town.
Absolutely. That, that, I have a challenge with, with our retail operations group a lot on that. And a big part of that is a lot of times with turnover with the, with our store managers and store personnel. And, you know, when, when a promotion comes out from the Shell brand, they're shipping the, the signs out to the stores and they're putting them up. But, but we certainly don't want to be in violation of any of the, any of the town bylaws.
But we would appreciate that. Thank you. So I don't have any other questions, but I just wanted to explain my position, and it dovetails into what Bill was saying. I understand that your explanation is that additional pumps does not mean additional traffic, but I'm, I'm not sure I agree with that. I think 12 pumps is a lot on the site. I think what, I think what you're doing, like Bill said, is you're putting in the maximum size store you can, and you're putting in the maximum number of pump stations, as well as a couple of charging stations. I do think it's overbuilt. And what that brings me back to is, this is a site that has a non-conforming use. It is our goal with sites that are non-conforming to eventually have that non-conforming use go away. If we are increasing the non-conforming use, or even just allowing it to continue longer, and just by upgrading this, and it is making it bigger, it's increasing it. I know that's not your position, Attorney Froya, but I believe it's increasing the non-conforming use. And that goes against what I think is our goal, or my goal, to see that non-conforming use eventually go away. So that is why I am not in favor of this. It's not specifically because of traffic or because of bollards, it's the whole thing increasing the non-conforming use. So I just wanted to explain my position. Thank you.
I missed the original meaning of this, and so ended up, the very nice.
I missed the original meaning of this and so ended up, we're very nice at the library there, set up upstairs. We, we got, I was by myself, it was a long meeting. And as soon as I got to this, I really looked. Because, uh, you, when things are counterintuitive, you know, you pay attention. If somebody's doing something with this hand and you say, what's going on over there? And so when they said they're increasing the number of pumps, but not to worry, it's not going to increase the use. And I'm saying, well, you know, I'm sorry. I, I have a hard time accepting that. Because why, you know, put more pumps in if you're not expecting more use? And I was the first one to mention it because as soon as I saw it, I can recall when we originally did this site, there was a non-conforming use. And you can't help when you resolve and there's somebody or something already there. You know, they have a right to stay there. But we also have a responsibility to be sure that they don't increase the number of. And they're telling us that, don't worry, yes, there's going to be a little increase of use. And it's like the doctor saying, it's going to hurt a little more, but you're not even going to notice. No, so just saying, you're ending, that's what they've said, they've said. You know, yes, it's going to be a little more traffic, a little more attention. And we know it is now. Joe mentioned that during the holidays, they have two parks out there in front of Bed Bath &amp; Beyond.
Every Saturday.
Yes.
Almost every Saturday.
And people don't know Market Basket if they don't go to Market Basket generally traffic. So that's, that's another, uh, opportunity. So when they came in with this plan and the first thing I said was, you know, take out one of those pump stations, stop. Because that's certainly going to intensify the use of non-conforming use. The other thing is that, and I, and I think Bill was the first one to mention this. And I, it's my turn, so I'm going to keep talking. God, there's a Dunkin' Donuts out on the corner of Wood Street. When that was built, I went toe-to-toe with A. B. and said, give us something decent in that corner. It's the most prominent corner in town, really. And I said, you know, you own it and you can put something a little better there. He said, in effect, you're going to get the standard highway sign. Because I can't, that's what Dunkin' Donuts are. Now, you go one mile down the street to where, to, to, uh, Auburn and you look, if you left, there's a nice Dunkin' Donuts there. There's some nice features on it, something like a house, if you didn't know if it's a parking lot or something. So in fact, he, he could have done that. And I certainly, I think with all that mentioned, can do something a little bit more aesthetic, if I could use that term, than, than a standard highway building is what that, what that looks like to me. And, uh, you know, there's, there's, there's no give on this as far as the performance concerned. They have, which is usual, they have their plan, they want their plan and they want approval of the plan as is. And I just have a hard time with what I see as the intensive, more intensive use here in, in approving this as it is. If they want to upgrade it and so forth, that's fine. It's already with a relic of now giving certain stocks in town. Fortunately, we're very, very active in, in getting more intensive use. If you watch what's going on in six three and so forth. So I think in any instance in that general area where there's going to be an increase in intensity of use, I believe you when you tell me it's not going to make a difference. But when I put my head on the pillow, I just think, you know, I just, I, I, I don't believe it, it just doesn't make sense. So that's my feeling.
Thank you.
Question, uh, this gas station you say will have, uh, as proposed, six two-sided pumps. Are there any other gas stations in the general area that are set up that way? I was just trying, sitting here trying to think and I think most of them are two islands with two pumps, so.
Liz, we went through this exercise the other day and I, I kept that notebook at home. Liz and I went through this exercise so, okay. So we did on the phone, um, on our free meeting, so, um, the, I think that, I don't know if we were able to find any other gas station in town that has more than four fueling stations.
There is one, sixty-two in, uh, King Street, next to La Cacha's, right?
Oh, okay, we missed that one.
Because, yeah, some of.
They have six, do they have two?
They have two?
They have.
They have.
Two sets of three?
We get it, just like this, three, two sets.
Okay. If, if, that's, I guess that's the only one I can think of and some of those are, are, has been mentioned. And some of those gas stations have recently been renovated, so there was an opportunity to do that. And actually, a few of them I, I can think of would, would actually have the room to do it too. So, so you might want to consider not doing it, but maybe leave some room for expansion in the future if you had to. Because that seems to be a stumbling point with the board. My, my other question is if in fact you do use bollards and not curbstones, do the bollards get, get spaced in the center of the parking space? Do you know, do you make sure they are or where, where are they spaced?
Two in every space, essentially.
Spacing?
Yes.
Generally, they're spaced five feet outside.
Okay, but where are they placed relative?
They're placed in space, right? Basically, right at the very end of the parking space.
I understand that, but, okay, so I'm driving into my parking space. Is the bollard going to be right here or is it going to be over here?
It'll vary because they're five feet on center and the parking spaces are different space. So they'll basically cover uniformly across the entire front.
But is the purpose of the bollard to keep the car from driving into the building of the pedestrians?
It is, and it's also to keep cars from driving in between, which is why they need to be narrow. It used to be standard to put them at the, in the direct center of a parking space. But what that does is when you have a parking space that's nine feet wide, it allows a nine-foot gap for any car to drive right through.
Well, it seems to me that that would mean that you just add another one in the middle.
And that's why we dropped them at five feet outside.
Okay, I'm off. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Oh, I'm sorry, Brady, did you determine?
I did, I was able to pull it up on Google Satellite and I've only seen three double-sided pumps for a total.
Yeah, and the one, the one in prime is just one, two, three, four, five, six.
Thank you.
Quick question, um, so the reason for adding the other island is, is it in your hope that you've increased the capacity? So people will fill up their gas and then go in and use it? Or what's the reasoning behind going from four to the six?
Yes, uh, as, as stated earlier, uh, we anticipate with more offerings inside the, the store, uh, with the food offering and, uh, uh, you know, more, more product offering than we have currently. And I just, I do want to point out this, this is not a glorified seven-eleven. We don't have hot dog roller grills, we have, you know, made to order fresh food, uh, sandwiches, offerings, um, fruit, vegetables, a, a lot of healthy offerings inside the store. So, um, I know there was a comment about this being a glorified seven-eleven store at the last meeting. We, we pride ourselves in, in the stores that, that we build and, um, you, you can see some photos that, that we provided of some other locations that we recently constructed. It's a, it's, it's a modern, it's an inviting, it's a bright offering for the, for the customers. So we do anticipate more foot traffic into the stores. And, uh, the, the point I made earlier, the reality of running gas stations is that, uh, people use the fueling positions as parking spaces. So if we have a higher percentage of folks that are going into the store to make a purchase, we're going to have a higher percentage of, of, of people parked at, at the, the fuel dispensers.
Thank you. I, I don't think adding the two will really affect the, the traffic on those six turnpike. It's going to be bad either way. I mean, people are going to be going there either way, so I don't have that, uh. Um, have you found with other locations that you've upgraded that when you increase the size of the building, that there was more, um, people parking at the pumps and that you needed more, I guess, space? Because pumps are being tied up because of the increased building or increased offerings?
Yes, people, people park, tend to park more at, if they're going in the store and they're purchasing fuel, uh, it's a lower percentage of customers that would leave the fueling position and drive their car into another parking position. So the parking that is along the storefronts primarily going to be used by customers that are just coming in to get a coffee, get a sandwich, get cigarettes. The, the customers that are buying both, um, some, some will move their car from one position to the other, but most of them will park at the fuel dispensers. And that's, that's why it's important to us that, um, we had that many fueling positions because they're fueling slash parking.
It's going to be the Amados side, right? The very popular main, I know, I'm complying with them. Okay, nothing further, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just, I first want to preface it, I think Paul hit it right on the head. I don't think, in my opinion, I don't think there's any question that this is going to be more detrimental to an already overtaxed area down there, an over-traffic area down there, number one. But I'm going to take it the next step to another point that Paul made and I'm, be honest with you, I, I, I can't figure this for the life of me. You know, every building that comes into Burlington, they tell us they have a certain standard they have to meet from the corporate office. And then I go down to Cape and I see the exact same convenient M.D. told us they couldn't have a different roof style in the center of our town. You go down a T ticket, you should see the one down there. Could not be more colonial looking and a roof, a real, you know, a real roof, uh, you know, architectural single roof, not the one they said they have to have. You go to CVS down there, it's same thing, very colonial looking. In other words, when they come to Burlington, they tell us they have to comply with corporate, but when they go to other towns, they, they comply with the towns. And, and to the Dunkin' Donuts point, go over to Lexington and see that Dunkin' Donuts over there on, uh, near the, the Arlington line over there in Lexington and, and take a look at that one and see how colonial looking that one is. Certainly didn't comply with it, but, you know, that I guess is one of the things that irritates me most about these chains coming into the town. Is that they, you know, they, they, up and down, they'll tell us how much they have to comply with the corporate, but when they go in other towns that mandate it, they, they end up not complying with corporate, they put what the towns want. But that's just, I guess, my soapbox more, more than, uh, the fact that I don't think it's, I don't think there's any question in my opinion that this is much more, uh, this is, this is much more detrimental to that area down there that's already way over trafficked. And I, so, so I guess I'm looking for more concessions because we, you know, they want everything they want, but, you know, they, they, they don't want to give anything. And, um, landscape, they want to keep the landscape low, we'd like to get some trees. You know, we'd like to have a, a sidewalk that's got some curbing on it, they want to have it flat so you can walk up on the whole thing. Well, I thought that's what entrance ways were, so you could have walkways. You know, and you shouldn't be walking up on a sidewalk when there's a walkway to go in the front door. So, you know, these are the things, I guess, that over time just work on me. And maybe I've thirty-one years and, and public office is getting a little, is getting a little much for me. So a little less tolerant than I was before.
Anyone else have any questions or comments that they would like? This is a public hearing, is there anyone in the audience or on the webex meeting that would like to make a comment?
I am seeing nobody.
I think, you know, I, I think you've, you've heard the board. They want you to pull out your vest outfit out of your closet and bring it to us and see what you can make happen. You know, I, I don't love the sign, I don't hate it, but I, I do think that we can do better. I, I do appreciate and like, and like the idea, um, of having planters, you know, balls, the, the bollards inside the planters. You know, that size C-store is going to bring traffic, no matter whether you have four pumps or six pumps, because there's not really a whole heck of a lot out there unless you really want to go into Market Basket or into H-Mart or, you know, you will get the business, especially, you know, bringing a, a, a food service in there as well. So, you know, I think what I'm hearing is, let's take another stab at this. May I have a motion?
That clear? May I just?
Of course.
Some closing comments, so, um, Bill will be here, we're going to be one of, one businesses in town for at least the next twenty years at this location and at the other locations. And, um, certainly do want to upgrade the facilities. We've got aging facilities out there, we have, we're obligated to, to, to sell Shell Fuel for a number more years under contract with Shell. We are tied up with a lease with the, uh, the closed D'Angelo's building. And, um, we're, we're going to have to make those work economically for us. And if we're making a large investment, um, you know, there were, there were some key components to that that, that, that are very important to us and we see as, as, uh, really key aspects of our business model. And, and, you know, that, that is the, I, I've made that case for the six fuel dispensers. But I, I guess that's, that's not going to be a win for us. So, you know, we had a plan to invest about four million dollars in this site, we're, we're heavily invested into it right now. So we, we would have to, have to go back and, and take another look at this, but I'm, I'm just not sure with, uh, with what we're being asked to do, that we're going to be able to come up with a plan. And I certainly don't want to leave, you know, we, we do want to do some enhancements on these older aging facilities, rather than just continuing to run what's there for twenty years and, and just get a tenant into the, to the existing restaurant space. So I appreciate the, the opinions of, of all the, the board members. And I just, we'll, we'll have to figure out where, where we go from here, um, understanding the, uh, the, the direction this is going with, with the board.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, if they want to make some of the changes, you know, significant to satisfy the board's concerns, I would be willing to make a motion to continue. If not, I would make the motion to deny.
Yeah, we would, you know, respectfully request permission to withdraw with, without prejudice instead of denial. So without having to be on the agenda again, we could go back and maybe do some more studying, but a denial is just going to sink, sink us for two years. So I would hope we would get the withdrawal without prejudice.
Yeah, I, I would, I would prefer. So, um, is that the, the wishes of the board, is that, is that the wish of?
We're, we're requesting that.
That.
Then I make a motion to be allowed to withdraw.
Um, I have a motion for you guys, actually, we came prepared tonight. Yeah, we did.
The one that's in the staff?
The one that's in the staff report.
I never get, I never get to the end. The planning board hereby accepts the application, request and draw without prejudice on the application of special permanent site plans admitted by Noria Energy Corporation.
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Thank you very much for your time and.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Have a good evening. Hey, um, has, ever, wants to read through the minutes?
Yes.
I apologize for inundating you.
Nope, that's okay.
Over and over.
We have not, um.
I'm afraid that if we don't start accepting some reason, if we're going to go back to where we.
I read them, you know, I read them, let me take my word them, they were great.
Have four people that have read them, okay, let's go for it.
Uh, motion to accept the four sets of minutes as presented to us by Brady.
Second.
All those in favor?
I.
Opposed? Abstained? Great, others matters of discussion. We were talking about renaming the IH district. So, uh, Liz, I'd asked, so, so, but, uh, basically, what we're looking to do, so the IH district, we've kind of, it's not really a high-rise industrial district, as you guys know, it's kind of retooled so that it's, you know, ten feet higher than the IG district. We're trying to attract life sciences use through that, it's kind of becoming
It's kind of becoming more of an industrial-style life science use. You know, naming conventions for zoning districts, like, you know, I've been looking, you know, our neighboring towns and, you know, can, you know, places that have, you know, a lot of life science. So I looked in Cambridge, and, and so basically, kind of naming conventions for zoning districts are not that flashy. So usually you'll have, you know, an industrial, an industrial zone A that will have specific, you know, specific requirements and height and, you know, setbacks. And so I think, Ernie, you had mentioned last week or last, last meeting, the, you know, IG two district or IgA district. Something I did notice that a lot of places do is they'll have an industrial district, and they'll have an industrial A district, industrial B, industrial C. I don't know how you guys feel about changing it to IgA and then, you know, the IH would be IgB or, you know, something like that. I only bring it up for you guys to kind of have it marinate because pretty soon, if we want to bring this to town meeting in, in September, we're coming up on that deadline.
The end of June.
At the end.
June twenty-ninth.
June twenty-ninth.
So I think we can put a placeholder in.
Correct.
All right, so let's do that, if everyone can agree.
Yes.
No, no, sure. When, I heard, I thought three months with. No, I'm saying the other.
Scott Weiss?
Scott, yeah, that, you know, we used to hear from them occasionally. They used to come in, present to us and so forth. And, and I used to get that when I, I was, when I was chair, I opened myself representative to the Land Use Committee because they're the ones that vote on it. And so I used to go to Land Use, and they, they'd bring them in. I mean, that's where they make their, their protestation really, because they're the ones that are going to vote on it. So you've got all, all the specifics and so forth, which we really haven't had when we're discussing. And there was something recently, they were, where they were talking about the specifics of, of those zones. And I thought it would be great if we had one or both of them come in at one time and tell us what they want and what they need as far as the, the zoning for these new buildings. Because they, they do have some specific needs. And I, I, I don't feel really that well informed, because they said, they say, well, they just need a little higher ceiling. And I think it's more than that, because the use, the spacious and parking is completely different. Apparently, these buildings don't require nearly the amount of parking because they're, instead of having people in testing, they have lab stands. And they have, you know, relatively small number of people. They have the director of the lab and their assistants and so forth, so they require less parking. And, and they have some more specific uses as far as what they need to satisfy their use of water, sewer, and that kind of thing. Because a lot of times, they, they can discharge the products of the use and so forth, and the, and the chemicals and everything into the water supply. So, you know, whenever Todd is committed or anybody else, you know, it, it's really, really helpful to have a better understanding. And when this originally came in, and, you know, I thought Kristen, they should have a dream or something. She's, I got three zones and these and those, and I said, you know, it was almost like, give me some different industrial sort of, so she said, okay, we'll do A, B. And so when I proposed, I thought A was good, it's on the hill, it's a good location. And, and I would be perfect, would, would be willing to consider that for whatever zoning these type of people need. Because it's, it's be perfect, because they like to get together. And as I said, we go down the hill, and you get, and so what else, and so forth. But I, I, I wish there was some way that I could feel better informed as to what they need to actually are, so when they come to us in person, we can bob our heads a little bit.
Sure, I think that we could do that, and I think we already have kind of a presentation put together.
So, where are you, Madam Chair, if I may? So Paul, you bring up some really great points, and definitely. And so, you know, I know that a lot of the larger property owners in town have been talking with our new economic development director, Melissa Tentoclas. She has a great group of people, including Brenda and Mike, who are on the economic development kind of task force committee. But I think that there are, you know, you could always come talk to us in the planning department. There, you know, we're hearing stuff all the time, and there's a lot of Middlesex three. Their meetings are also something that they talk a lot about, a lot, a lot about the needs of life science and what's coming up in the, in the region. And so, but if you know the properties in town, they are not shy about telling us what they want and need. So I feel like we are, we are currently, right now, in a good spot zoning-wise to, to, to accommodate their needs. And I'm sure that if they need other things, we will be the first to know.
Well, I'm glad that you know that. But as the recent meeting, we were going back and forth, and, and there were some issues that came up. And there was staff, people and so forth that were there that had their opinion. And some of the people on the board had a different opinion. And I said, wow, it's very nice you have those opinions and everything else, but these are the people that vote. Nothing happens until, until we vote for something. So it's good that you know, but I, I want to know too, when I vote. And I'm glad we have the staff that we do. Nonetheless, your knowledge, if you have it and I don't, doesn't help me as far as voting, of course.
Can I make, since I suggested the IG two or B or whatever, can I make a case for that?
Just want us to be IGC, so for Medina?
Wow. I think that, no, I, I think Kristen, Kristen and I happened to be talking, and she said, yeah, we probably should change the name because it's, it's, it's oxymoron. It doesn't, it's not a high-rise anymore. And people at town meeting when we brought the zoning forward, we're, we're getting confused to the point where I probably had like ten people that I corrected. Oh, no, no, it's not high anymore, it's not a hundred fifty-five feet, it's only ninety.
Well, ninety, yeah.
Ninety feet.
Under certain others.
So.
You're still confused, whatever, no, you're not, but they were.
What I, I was trying to, to get across the point that it was close to IG. Maybe we want to change IG to some other name too and, and make them both singular. But I think Kristen was saying, had proposed something like, maybe an innovative zone or something.
Innovative district or something.
But I, I, in my mind, I thought that, you know, so the people who are only in IG are going to feel, what do we chop with it? You know, that kind of thing, so.
So let's, let's all mull it over, and, you know, we have.
To get a placeholder.
I just have, just a, a little piece of that, it was kind of on the lines of, you know, Santa Fe guaranteed. Wish there was a way that if we, if we, you know, the innovation district, so it's been done supposedly for the purpose of, of accommodating life sciences, right? Ceiling heights and things like that, but yet we don't, we haven't, we haven't tied it to that. So we've increased, mind you, it's only in ten feet. We've increased the height of the buildings to accommodate a particular unit, but we haven't, not guaranteed to get that use there. So I, I wish there was some way to tie it to that use, because I'd be more than happy to rezone these things. To, you know, we're going to guarantee to get there, but I don't want to rezone these properties to simply to give potentially another floor of space. So that I want, I would like to see tightened up a little bit. If then, if there's a way to do that, then you can call it an innovation zone. You know, but there's now, you can't change it to innovation zone because it could still be an office. It could still be a, a, you know. So I don't know if there's a way to do that as well. Can't be a storage.
We.
I mean, office, right, office space, it could be office space, which.
You could look into.
Yeah, absolutely.
We're certainly looking into that.
Absolutely.
Next on the agenda was in-person versus remote meetings. I think everybody's comfortable coming in now.
So just basic background, just so you guys are all aware. So the emergency order that Governor Charlie Baker signed, allowing for remote meetings, expired on Tuesday, I believe, June fifteenth, on Tuesday. Our amazing clerk, Jen Jalinas, actually posted this meeting as in-person. So we were, she was on the ball. We kind of had all assumed that, that Charlie Baker would extend it like before the fifteenth, but he didn't, which is why we, we are here today. But he has since, this morning, has extended that state of emergency, or, or the allow it, the legislature has allowed remote meetings to continue for another year. So it is allowed, it's, you know, it's up to you guys what you want to do.
We could be in our houses right now.
We can, for your time, too. It's on the way down.
A job?
No, no.
So, you know, that's just, you know, something, another option that I think is a good thing to have in our back pockets. So, you know, I, I'm just going to throw that out there and.
I'm just going to throw one comment back. Our meetings are starting to get a little tighter. I like that. You know, the roll call adds half hour, forty-five minutes to our meeting. So if, if we can be present, you know, I support that. Obviously, you know, I support everybody else's personal decision, but, you know, if we can keep things concise and to the point, you know, I think we can be more productive that way, so.
True, could you ask the board if there's any, anybody has an objection, you just make it.
Does anyone have an objection?
In-person, maybe?
Such an interesting. Yeah, of course, like somebody, if somebody doesn't feel that, or. Yeah, yeah.
Well, that's the thing, where I have the ability, if one person say was on vacation and wanted to call, they can do that, it's nice to have that.
Oh, sure, yeah, absolutely.
I'm on vacation.
Me neither, no, it is. No, it is. Okay, do we have any, I'm sorry, I, I didn't have one other thing.
Yes, we did not pick a date for our strategy, did we?
We have.
Intuitively, it's July twenty-second.
Yes, 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 what I needed. Thank you. Do we have any correspondence? Any reports from Town Council? Subcommittee reports? Unfinished business? New business? They have a motion, please.
Motion to adjourn.
All those in favor?
Bye.